Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the Wellington Board of Education Special Meeting is a budget workshop for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, six P M. The agenda calls, we have a call of order, President to speak. Introduction of the Wellington Public Schools Superintendent's Proposed Spending Plan. And we have a program room which will discuss the Center Elementary School. And then we'll discuss the Hall Memorial School Program and Transportation Review and Board of Ed Discussion and Adjournment. This is a workshop. And for discussion purposes, though, will not be any action taken this evening. Next order of business is President to speak. Speakers will be recognized by the Chairman and identify himself or herself by name and address and proceed with his or her comments. All persons will be limited to five minutes. The total time allotted for a person to speak shall not exceed twenty minutes. At the discretion of the Board and may not address specific personnel issues. This is Board of Education Policy ninety-three, twenty-five. Do we have anyone present to speak?
I think there's only one person that's not a board member right now. And that's Melissa, I'm not sure, Melissa, if you want to raise your hand, if you're on a computer. If you want to speak. She's nodding her head no, I think that she's the only one, thanks Melissa.
Well, we don't have person to speak later on in the agenda, so now was the time.
She's the only one that's here that's not a board member besides the admin team, so.
Okay. Okay, I guess we'll move on to item three. Introduction of Wellington Public Schools Superintendent's Proposed Spending Plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Okay, and everyone has a packet, I believe, that was delivered.
Sorry, I muted myself.
It's also on, on the computer, you put it through on the computer too. Okay. I guess you can start.
All right, so first, just want to say some thank yous. This is obviously a long process, there's been a lot of work that's put into this. It's intense, there's a lot of coordination, a lot of phone calls, I think Marcia and I even talked a couple of times this weekend. And so it takes a lot of collaboration, so just want to thanks the, the admin team. You, they're on the call today, we have Rich Napoli who can just wave, he's the principal of Center School, we have Mary Kay DeShaunis, who's a middle school principal, and we have Marshall McGinley, who is the People's Services Director. Obviously, they have a significant amount of feedback into this budget. I, this couldn't happen without Brenda, my assistant. And I'm going to be honest, Donna Latinsic and I have put some serious hours into this budget and Donna and I were over here over the weekend, a couple of days, just trying to find those last pennies and adjustments because we just weren't satisfied with where we were at, so big thanks to them. Anyone who's following along, if you want to see a copy of the budget, it is posted on our website. If you go to WellingtonPublicSchools.org and Melissa, this is really just for you right now. But if you go to WellingtonPublicSchools.org, you click on the B O E section, there's a budget section and it says twenty-one, twenty-two. Our master, my superintendent's proposed budget is on there and there's also a folder for C I P documents. So with that, first thing I'd like to do is just do a walkthrough. And you know, just a reminder, this is the, your first time looking at it. And I know that it's always challenging getting something for the first time and I know you're going to have questions next time. Typically, you would just walk into a meeting at six o'clock tonight and you would have a copy of the budget sitting on your table, that'd be the first time you see it, just like a member of the public, and this is where you act as board members and get to see it for the first time. So just a, a quick walkthrough of the budget. If you go to table four, it's got the, the, sorry, page four. It's the, the table of contact contents, it lists all the items in the document. We have ten programs that we have broken the budget into. We'll have, we have enrollment information, we have program summaries from the administrators. We have staffing information and then we also have some budget assumptions. So you'll see that on page four, if you're looking for something. If you go to page two. And I'm not going to read the board goals, but the board goals are at the bottom of page two. And know that we, you had some input in this, I realize it's a wild year because of COVID. These are your goals and we know that long term, these are really hard to write, but we align our budget, our, our, our funding, when we create the budget, to your goals. And so we can always time dollars back to one of the items that you have in, in your, in your board goals. It is the driving force for all of the specific allocations that, that we, we make. Next, I'm going to have, have you move to page twenty-four. This is the start of the appendix. And Rich and Mary Kay and Marcia all have written just a, you know, one pager, Marcia's got some definitions because special ed has a lot of definitions for you. But the one pager is basically an overview of, you know, what are they proud of at their schools? What are their goals for next year? And you know, what are some of the things that they're working on? So that's all part of the appendix. Their instructional summaries. So those are all there and again, aligned with your board goals and aligned with, with the resources, the dollars that we put to this. Okay? If you continue along and you go to page twenty-eight. That is all of the grants, okay? And we have quite a few grants and I do want to take a couple of minutes to go through these. This is what helps offset a huge chunk of the budget. And I apply for these most of the time annually. Marcia does the I D A grant, which is the special ed grant, but I want to walk through them. Where you're going to see this in, in the budget documents. You won't see all tonight, but you'll see them as we go through. So the special ed grants that you have the I D A B grant. That is again, to supplement local dollars for the purpose of, of ensuring that students with special needs get the, the support they need. We use eighty-seven thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars is applied to salaries. And that is both paraprofessionals and certified staff. And you notice I, I always like to put in, what did we do last year? Last year was less, it was about ten thousand dollars less that we applied last year. We applied a little bit more this year when I called Marcia, I said, can we apply a little bit more money? We've applied almost all of that grant now, we've, we've really drawn down that grant to offset the budget. There's also are the same grant, six thousand dollars is applied to purchase services. And we know that that is for our, our I E P direct program. You'll see that when we get into program three, not tonight. The second part of the I D A grant is we apply five thousand eighty-six dollars to our preschool program. It helps offset the salary. Okay, so again, when we do our budgets at the very end of each section, if there's a budget offset from a grant, you'll see it tied exactly to this and you'll know what it is, you can come back here as a reference. The excess cost grant is when you have a student that's receiving special education services and the cost for that student is in excess of four and a half times your calculated pupil, per pupil expenditure, you could get some reimbursements, only be on that dollar point though. So let's just say our per pupil, you know, it was eighty thousand dollars and we had a student that costs a hundred thousand dollars. That means there's twenty thousand dollars that would be eligible for excess cost. We apply that in the budget as an offset. This year, it's the highest I think it's ever been. I will tell you, there's a level of risk to this, it's a hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. And the reason there's a level of risk to this is because if someone's program changes or they move on a district at a certain time, this could hurt because you're counting on those monies coming back. We are confident this year though that the monies that we're applying here, that the situations that are, were, you know, these are for specific students that we know that those specific changes are, we, we don't anticipate them happening. And that's why we've applied so much money. It's typically around seventy to seventy-five percent that we get back. The rest of the grants are general education grants. And Title One, you can, you can read the, what the description is. This is tied off of our free and reduced numbers. The grant amount that we applied to salaries is seventy-seven thousand eighty-four. That split between Hall and Center Schools, you'll see that number today. It's a little bit more than it was last year, again, it's tied to our free and reduce, so some years it's a little bit more, some years it's a little bit less. Title Two is for Supporting Effective Instruction. We use that for professional development. We've applied the entire grant total twelve thousand seven hundred nine dollars this year. You'll see that entire amount as an offset in, in one of the programs. Title Four, you have never seen. This is a newer grant within the last few years, I think we just started getting it. We've used it to offset clubs, it's how we started building our clubs. We've applied the entire grant to offset, to be able to do clubs at our schools. And so we've applied the, the entire ten thousand dollars to that amount. It says professional development, that's actually wrong. That should be, and I'm going to correct that as I go through this, you know, you can only read a document several times before you catch things. That is actually for clubs. And then the last grant is the REAP grant. That's the Rural Education Grant. That comes as a, as an automatic, it helps to balance out districts that are rural to get the technology they need in the districts. And so we have an offset and you'll see the offset tonight in our budget or some, some of the equipment purchases that we need, it could be like smart, smart boards or could be additional Chromebooks if we have breakages or projectors, laptops, things like that. And there's an offset there. You can see the total that we have for the offset is significant. It's three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So these, the offset of these grants really helps Wellington Public Schools provide the education that our, our students need. All right, any questions about any of the grants?
And excess cost grant, is that the same as the E C S grant, really separate?
No, they're separate, that's the education car sharing grant is the.
We don't know what that is yet, do we?
No. No.
Does that, that has an impact on our budget, doesn't it?
It's the, the amount of money that the state helps cover and it's usually pretty significant. I think our E C S funding, some towns went down a couple hundred thousand dollars in the last couple of years. I think we've lost about thirty thousand dollars, but that never comes into, the board never sees that.
Wasn't it?
Doesn't. Yes, and, and it, you know, I can ask Donna that question, Latinsic, but I don't, it's just a number that they use to offset your, your budget. But it doesn't come in as a grant to.
Here, we probably could expect it to go down this year again.
It's, so last year, yes, the, they've projected out through next year. And again, they're, they're reviewing this because there's some, some significant inconsistencies. There are towns that received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more and there's other towns that received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less. And they're trying to come up with some equitable solution for this, there's actually some legislation around this this year, it wouldn't impact this neck, this coming budget year. But in the future, it could. They're trying to find some ways to, to make it work, maybe match it to Title One. But I know that this year we had a thirty thousand dollar impact and next year we're expected to have the same.
But that doesn't have a direct impact on our budget, except indirectly through the general.
Correct.
On budget, okay.
So if you oh, sorry, and, oh, sorry, and let me unmute you. I'm juggling like eighty-five papers here and the camera, so I apologize.
Yeah. The governor said today in his briefing that he, they mentioned the budget briefly and he said one of his goals is to increase spending for education. So that's hopeful.
Yeah, this is, I'll, I'll share with you that there was something put forward by the Superintendent's Association. It's kind of one of those things where you can't look at special education funding without looking at four other things because it's so expensive. And so they put forward a proposal to the legislators basically to say, look at this as a comprehensive package, E C S funding, special education funding, there's all sorts of those things. It's the first time someone's ever successfully pulled them all into one document and presented them all together. I'm hopeful for it and I, I may be able to bring some more information about it, it is very new. It just came out in December and that may be what the governor's talking about because this, it has some legs, which in the past it's been inconsistent.
Now, this excess grant that we received, a hundred and twenty-one thousand, is, is that fixed or is that an estimate?
So let's just call it a really good estimate. We can, based upon a student's I E P, we can determine their cost. And we can determine it by their services as of today. And we expect that for these students that are over that per pupil cost, that their services are going to be pretty consistent. And so we know that based upon whether it's, it could be an outplacement, sometimes you have students in district that are suit, it really costs a lot of money because they had needed additional services. Whichever one it is, we generally have a really good idea. In this case, and I wouldn't put this forward if we weren't confident. I would have said, let's leave it at a hundred thousand dollars because it's, this is volatile. This is not one of those situations where a lot more confident that this is going to be a pretty good number. It has to do with the, you know, transportation is built into this, could be the cost of an outplacement, it could be the cost of O T P T speech, a paraprofessional, it's just the list goes on and on. When we get to program three, I can definitely have Marcia build more upon that so you get a sense of, of what that's about.
Applies for these grants.
Yeah, we work together, I mean, Marcia and I have budget meetings every, every so often because special education is volatile. But they're the ones that apply for this grant because they have the student information, correct?
Just Laura. Just one, yeah, I think I'm starting to understand this process, but so you figure out what the cost for whatever these things that grants will cover, you apply for that grant. Do you, do we pay the money first and get reimbursed or do we, or like, how does that piece of the grant work? Do we have to put the money up front and then be reimbursed or?
It depends on the grant, to be honest with you. So if you, if you're just talking about the Title One Grant, you're going to see in a minute where we actually offset the budget. So if we're going to pretend like Center Schools was a hundred thousand dollars and the Title One Grant was, we applied fifty thousand dollars, we now, the, the budget comes down fifty thousand dollars.
So it directly pays.
Correct.
Okay.
Some of the grants you have to pay for at first and then you get reimbursed back. It just depends on the grant.
The excess cost grant, which way does that work?
Marcia, not, I believe it's a reimbursement grant, correct? Yes, I thought so. Got to pay for the student first and then you get your money back.
Yeah, okay.
Are there any other grants we may apply for?
The only other grant that's not listed right now is the one that just came up last year. It's, but it's through the P T A. They are, I've, I've worked with the P T A to do a judi, it's through the judicial grant. We got twenty-five thousand dollars for last year and we applied it to some clubs and things, we bought some extra laptops, there's still some money in there. And so we're actually applying for that again. I can't say I'm applying for it because it's really the P T A applying for it. And there, when we get something, that is a reimbursement grant, Laura, but it's connected directly to the schools. They've loosened that grant up for what you can use it for because of COVID. So it was really specific, Michelle's got her hand up.
I have some insight on that particular grant, the likelihood of that being offered again is about two percent.
There you go. Yeah, we got a lot of money in the first year and, and we were surprised, I was impressed when it came through, so. Some of these grants come and go, the grants that are on the, the, this page that I shared with you is pretty consistent.
Just what, one more question. The Title Four Grant that is new, is, is that a new grant or is it just one that?
It's, it's not. It's not a new grant, we've, we've had it for a few years now, but we've never used it as an offset. We've always used it as something that was, you know, something that we could sup, supplement our, our programs with. And it's always been tied to clubs, you know, the additional things, so this could be for transportation. It could be for after-school clubs, any of those things. I think we've, we've, we've purchased is it maybe the V R goggles, you know, things like that, you could purchase, use funds like this to purchase. This year, it's an offset to pay for the clubs and again, with a purpose to keep the budget at a reasonable level.
Is, is part of what you're thinking for this grant, transportation for students? Like they stay after school, the clubs so that they can get home?
It's, it's really ten thousand dollars towards the cost of the stipend for the staff number to be able to offer. Yep.
I have one more question on the, on the total of three hundred and thirty-one thousand. Is that figured into our bottom line or is this kind of offline?
No, this is figured directly into your bottom line. So, yep, as soon as we get to program one for Center School, you're going to see at the very end, so if the total for program one was a million dollars and then that you have an offset from Title One of thirty-seven thousand dollars, it's going to take thirty-seven thousand right off that bottom line. And you're going to see that shortly. It's a lot of information, I know.
So we're saving the town three hundred thousand dollars.
You got it, Herb.
Make a point of that.
Yes, you will see that, these grants are really critical to, to what we can provide our kids. If you turn the page, there's a, there's a, the, an expected staffing for twenty-one, twenty-two. And you know, one of the items that I want to point out, just because it's a little confusing, is we have several staff members that work in both buildings. So if you see, you know, social worker, point seven-five at Center School and point two-five at Hall, a portion of each of that person's salary is in each of the buildings. You know, the, the, there's, if you see like the physical therapist under district, it's because they work at both schools and it's really just something that we contract out, that's where you see a point two-seven, it's part-time, it's based upon exactly what we need. And you can see the breakdown by school. Brendan and I had a long conversation about what makes up our staff. And I've never done this before, this is the first year I've done it and, and I think the people that know me know that I really value the team, I value everyone and it doesn't matter what your role is. I think everyone is really important in this process. We had never put on the food services, the, the other, the bottom. The, you know, the transportation, the bus drivers are on here now, now it's contracted out. But this is what you need to make up a district and without those folks, it wasn't there. So it gives you a sense of what's there. The district total is a hundred and twelve point nine one five, I hope that's what's on your paper, this is the paper Donna that was going to be changed. And so you can just go through and get a sense of what's what. This is the list of, of staff that Donna Latinsic and I use when we build out the budget for cost for staffing. And this is, you know, if you want to know how many pairs that are a school, it's on here. If you want to know how many custodians, it's on here, you can see where, where people are. When you see point five art, it's point five art in Center and point five art at Hall, but it's the same person. It's not a, it's not two different people. Okay? So that is the staffing. I know you want to get to the big stuff now, so let's, can we go back to page five? And I will review the budget snapshot for you of what this budget looks like.
So our staff is remaining the same, right? There's no increase.
There is actually a, a decrease in a couple of spots and an increase in a couple of spots and I'll share those.
Not on the teaching staff, though, it's in.
There's a deep, you'll see it in program one when we get to it, but there's a decrease in a classroom teacher because of the number of students at Center. And there's an increase in special education as a point four teacher. And then there's also the utility staffer in here because I'm not quite sure that we're going to be out of this COVID mess, to be honest with you. And so I budgeted for them. So this snapshot here. My proposed budget is three percent. This was well over five, not so long ago, was over five percent. And I can, I can tell you, this is tight, I say this every year, this is a tight budget, there's, we've, we've really whittled down where we can whittle down and what, you know, what we have control over and what's contractual versus what's not. We made a list of budget assumptions here for you so people know. You know, how into the weeds do we get on these things and, and we get very deep. So the budget assumptions that you see there, our current negotiation is actually half of what it was at this point. Last year, we were still at fifteen percent for, for medical insurance. Right now, we've already negotiated down to seven percent. With a, and, and then there's a cap at dental right now of no more than six percent. So that's what we know of today. And when I get to that specific program on a different night, I've actually calculated out if it comes down further, what the offset of the budget would be. We are going on to bid on that, that we expected to come down. There's one placeholder for insurance. What that means is Phil Stevens is an employee, he does not take insurance. In, in November, all of a sudden, his wife loses, loses her job, no longer family doesn't have insurance anymore and now I want insurance, you have to provide that insurance to me. And so that placeholder allows that us to pick that up. Some places have two and three and four placeholders, we have one. In the past years, a few years ago, we had two, but we've stuck with one and so far, we've lucked out with it and it's worked out for us. Workers' comp is capped at three percent. Heating fuel, this is one of our big successes. Last year, when we were negotiating because of COVID for fuel and, and that was not being used and fuel prices were so low, we negotiated our fuel when it was at the lowest, it was the earliest we've ever signed into it and they let us tie into it, so our heating fuel cost is a dollar sixty-three compared to two fourteen. And that's for heating fuel and diesel fuel, we're going to save some significant money there this year, which is great. Electric rates, we, same thing, there's a lower rate, rates. It goes into effect January of twenty-two, so you do have some six months prior to that. But you'll see some savings there and that's an extended contract. There are two district placements that are out of district, the special education budget. Our transportation costs go up by three percent, that's a contract, we have a lot of contracts ending next year. The bus contract is one of them and that will be renegotiated and I assure you, that will be renegotiated, work directly with Region Nineteen. Because we will see significant savings if we can work with them and Sharon Canoyer, the superintendent there and I have already talked about that. School choice in, in budget assumptions, school choice is magnet schools. Say this lightly, we've been crushed this year on magnet schools. Families that have moved in that have never come to the Wellington Public Schools that have always been in a magnet school and can stay there, we have to pay for them. And if they have special education needs, we have to pay for those needs, it's significant this year. And I'll say significant to the tune of close to two hundred thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. And then the last thing is, I'm sure you heard me raving about Novus when we were attacked. It was a December ago, a year ago, and we were attacked several times on our network and they didn't get through. Kerma, our insurance company, no longer is providing that security blanket because so. Kerma, our insurance company, no longer is providing that security blanket because so many towns and districts are getting nailed. Um, with added costs and they're paying a ton of money in those claims. So they're separating out their insurance now. We have to pay our own. Um, the first quote that came in was ten thousand dollars. We would split that with the town. We're still working on that, negotiating. We're trying to get Novus involved in that. But that's something that we've never had to do before, um, and it's, it's expensive. I've talked about the shared services before. Um, we have numerous shared services. You know, we share the, the, um, business office with the town. Um, we share the IT with the town. Um, we, we negotiate the heating fuel with the town. Um, they, we, we share some of that, the contracts for the mowing, recreation pays some of our, our field mowing. Um, we share our telephone system. So we have a lot of contracts that we work together. Uh, because on several of them, it makes us more marketable. Insurance is another one of those. It makes our pool a little bit bigger. Um, shared services are important. And then I thought, you've heard me talk about this in the past too, um, that we have unfunded mandates. And, you know, some of these are small, but time is money. And when we have to, uh, provide very specific training to staff members every year or every other year. And it's required, that costs money. You see that in contract negotiations. We said to you, we need some extra time at the beginning of the year because we have all of these things to go through that we're required to do on an annual basis. The latest one is the sexual harassment training. DCF training. They have to go through those things online on a program and they have to do those trainings. It's required. So we provide the time to do that, but remember that time costs money. There's examples there, um, that cost money, you know, we have a, uh, what I'll call Mary Kay's a newer administrator to us this year. Training for going out to, 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 to evaluate. All of those things are required and cost money. Um, so that's the budget snapshot. Um, just gives you a picture of, hey, where did this come from? Um, and, you know, what are the assumptions that we have and how, how are we gonna offset that?
Mention the, uh, shared services with the town. Uh, most towns in Connecticut don't have this many services that they share.
You're correct.
With the town, we're an exception, really. But and some of these are pretty big ticket items. And just, like in finance and human resources, is it fifty fifty there or? Like information technologies or a percentage or ratio of them?
It, good question. It depends on the service. The town actually pays you for your business office. Um, we pay for, uh, forty seven percent of the IT support. They pay fifty three. The, it depends on which item it is and how it's been broken apart. Um, you hear a lot, a lot of legislators talk about regionalization and regionalism. And what they're talking about is small district sharing services like this. If we could share something with another town, that'd be great too. But they're talking about, and you hear the governor talk about this too, back office shared services. That's what happens here. Um, if you had to pay for your own business manager, you're talking about another administrator. You're talking, you know, with, with benefits, you're a hundred thousand dollars. If you had to, it's, you know, those positions cost a lot of money. So we're lucky to share those things and yes, we do have several of them.
Who, who negotiated those percentages? Did you? Cause I don't remember being involved in that.
I don't know who negotiated the Novus, um, percentage. Um, I, I mean, obviously, I think the board of ed likes the. The amount of money they have to pay into the business office, which I don't think is anything. I think it's all in, in the town budget. Um, but we realize it comes out of the same pocket, you know, comes out of the Wellington taxpayers' pocket. So if you turn the page to, to page six, um, I can review the budget process and how we arrived at the current proposed budget. Uh, this is where you can also see the grant offsets. Um, so I collected the budgets from the administrators, we reviewed their requests. Um, you know, I, I work with, with Donna to, to, um, you know, look at where the resource allocation should be in the specific programs. Um, and then the following reductions were taken off, um, from the initial budget that's submitted. And I go through as, as deep as, you know, I wanna know how many seats you're gonna have in that program. Um, Rich and I have had this conversation. How many seats are in Lexia? We're gonna talk about that tonight. That's in here. Um, and so, you know, the result is clear. There's five hundred thousand dollars between the grants and the other deductions that's come off the budget to get to a three percent budget, okay? Um, several of the items, again, are, are things that we've been working along the way. This is ju- not just a two month process. This is negotiations along the way, looking long term. Some of it's looking ahead, reducing legal fees, things like that, and working fuel systems. Um, and negotiations. So if you look at that page six, just to walk through, so title one, our center school program one. That title one grant, we applied thirty seven thousand dollars. That is to a salary. You're gonna see that. Reap Grant applied five thousand dollars. That's for technology equipment. Um, we eliminated a point four three duty clerical position. That was at center school. The reason for that is because we have the three, um, utility staff in. Um, but there's a savings of eight thousand dollars there. And then because of the number of students and the expected number of. Um, it's not the expected number of births. It's the number of births that we saw in two thousand sixteen and the next, uh, expected number of kindergarten students coming in. We're eliminating one classroom section at center school. There's a savings of seventy two thousand dollars from that. So you can see the savings off of, uh, program one is a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. Um, you know, eliminating a position is, uh, not something that you see from me typically. Um, but I go to the data and when the numbers say, you don't have, you don't need the number of staff, that's what we have to do. When you look at program two, um, we applied the title one grant, again, the salary. The reason why there's more money applied to hall than in the center is they actually have a higher percentage right now of free and reduced. That's how the grant works. We have to apply more money there. It's not much, but it's something. We applied the title four grant again to the clubs and then we applied sixty eight hundred to, from the reap grant to offset technology costs that come up. Again, total fifty six thousand eight eighty four. Special, special education, there's a lot of money here. Excess cost grant was applied again, a hundred and twenty one thousand. The grant salaries for IDEA was eighty four thousand. Um, the purchase service, which is a, a portion of a para and, um, it's actually not a portion of para. What is that? Purchase services, six thousand, uh, it is actually a portion of a para. It's because it's a purchase service to East Con or Crack. So that's why it's left in there. And then it's, um, also, um, the IP direct program. We reduced the wealth program, um, and Marcia and I had a long talk about this. It was at seventeen thousand. We reduced it by ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. There's still about seven thousand in there. It's because of COVID. We do believe that we're gonna, uh, be able to provide enough tutoring hours. And there's money in there that will use, um, that'll come out of the wealth money. And I'll talk more about that when I get to the, the program three. And then Marcia and I, over the last, I would say, uh, you know, since she's been here, I asked her right away. You gotta look at the number of pairs. You gotta look at the, the cost for special education. Um, and the Lucrentian numbers, we really looked at, we thought we were spending more money by hiring through East Con and Crack. This is another, um, proof of that. It's proof of it. We have a sixty two thousand dollar savings in this next year's budget because we only have four pairs now that are coming from East Con and Crack. We are hiring into the W E S S union, um, the non cert union. It's saving us money. And if we weren't, it would cost more through Crack. If we really get. That's Marcia's last, uh, you know, it's her last straw. She's really going to East Con and Crack only when she needs to. Um, but we're trying to hire and it shows that there's savings there because of it. I already talked about program four and the fuel savings. It's nine thousand dollars. No change in program five. Program six, we applied, um, the entire title two grant, twelve thousand seven oh nine. Program seven, more fuel savings. This is, um, auto utilities, fifteen thousand eight seventy two. So just in fuel savings alone this year. We're, we're at, um, almost a quarter of percent. That's a lot. Nothing, uh, in program eight. I reduced the legal fees, um, for next year to, because we're just using it less. Um, and we're trying to be cognizant of that and use our cave services. It's come down five thousand. Um, and then fringe benefits, zero. So again, total reductions, five hundred and fourteen thousand. My proposed budget is nine million, one hundred twenty seven thousand fifty dollars. It is a flat three percent increase. Um, it's a two hundred and sixty six thousand, two hundred and twenty two dollar increase. If you wanna know, because I know someone's gonna do the math and they're gonna say it doesn't work out. It's because the percentage is not exactly three point zero zero. It's like three point zero zero four five and on, okay? So that is, um.
Program one. Phil.
Yes.
Program one, on the teacher reduction, savings seventy, seventy two thousand. Uh, is this in the ki- the kindergarten, right?
Yeah, yeah, and you're gonna see that when I get to the enrollment, you're gonna see the numbers and why.
Isn't that an area where sometimes we don't know really how many will be coming in there?
It is, Herb, but typically at this point, we can see in the number of births and with siblings. Where we believe we're gonna be at. We have a good guesstimate. The births for this year, um, are significantly lower. Rich, I'm just gonna unmute Rich so he can jump in.
I would think with the COVID, it'd be higher, but, uh, on this. Is that, um. Does that teacher in that position, whoever it is bump, are they gonna bump someone or?
It depends. It's all in the contract. It's by, you know, whoever's the last hire goes by that process.
So last year, Phil and I had, you know, we budgeted for three because the last so many years has been three teachers, but there's currently thirty four students. So based on the COVID unfortunate pandemic, we saw a lot of kindergarteners that did not come to school due to that. So. We were able to get kids into two classrooms, which helped us, you know, get down to two versus the typical three on a yearly basis. There may be more next year based on those kids that did not come to school, um, and those that are still remote learning. So. So that's why that, that kindergarten number is, um, down to two this year.
Yeah, and we're, you know, I, we've looked at the births for, for, at years now. Um, and I mean, when I say it's down, I think it's down, uh, fourteen. It's the number I believe it's down. That's a lot for one year.
Yeah.
But we'll see, Herb, you know, if, um. You know, I mean, that is a, 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 a piece that we have to keep an eye on, um, and if worse comes to worse, you know, we have to make an adjustment. Uh, salary, people come and go. So, you know, someone else could leave and you could be paying them top step at eighty five thousand and. You could hire someone new at forty five thousand and next thing you know, there's, there's significant savings there and it's just, you just don't know.
But sometimes when you're bumping like that, you'd lose some of your younger teachers.
You're correct. Correct.
But it's based, as you say, it's based on the numbers and the contract.
Yep, and it's in the con- we have to follow the process that's in the contract, so.
Yeah.
Um, Anne's got her hand up.
Um, for the families that chose not to send their children to kindergarten, are there any that did not do online learning? And instead just opted out?
I mean, we, we have, uh, and I, if I, I will get to the enrollment, I can answer that question. We have, I, I think it was nineteen students. I think it's nineteen. Uh, it's on my enrollment page, um, that went homeschool. That's a lot. They are now coming back though. Um, people are starting to realize like, look, the school's staying open. Um, and they've been gradually coming back. Um, and you're gonna see that in my enrollment page in a minute.
Okay, very good. They wouldn't, um, instead defer starting kindergarten until next year?
They, they could, but again, this is one of those things that, you know, the, probably the toughest years to figure this out because of the pandemic. Uh, you know, w- we're not, I'm going off of births and siblings. That's all we know. Then everything that right now points to, for us for data, says it's gonna be a lower number. It's gonna be a two section. Um, you know, it, it, maybe it'll surprise us and we'll have to pivot then, but then it's on me, then I get to figure that out.
Okay, thanks, Phil.
You're welcome. If you look at, um, page seven, this is my least favorite page in the budget. Um, I needed to know options that would bring the budget to zero percent. I received a lever, letter on Friday from the Board of Finance, um, requesting all budget writers come in at zero percent. Um, and, and I will tell you that I, I can't recommend that, um, you make those budget adjustments. I can't reckon. Say to recommend making these budget adjustments. Um, they would be devastating to our schools. Um, and, you know, when you start talking about eliminating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of a budget. Um, you're not gonna get that out of paper. You're gonna get that out of people and programs. You've heard me say that in the past. Um, page seven has a list of, of other things that you could consider. Um, but where does it end? Because next year, you're probably gonna see a three percent increase again, just with contracts. And so then you're gonna, you can't cut your way. You cannot eliminate your way out of, uh, increases. The only reset I see, um, is getting people into one building. I've said that. Um, the items that are on here, you could look to eliminate one, two or three utility workers. There are savings there. Do I think we need him if COVID's still around? I do, absolutely. Um, and that's why they're in the budget. You could look to eliminate, um, a, an elementary Spanish. Um, there are savings in that. You could look to go to a bigger class size. And I put two grades there because those are the grades that tend to have, um, the smaller classes. They would be going into much larger classes. You've seen the public come out for that. Um, you could, uh, eliminate an, an intervention paraprofessional at hall. Um, or the enrichment program that you fought so hard to keep. I don't think any of these are reasonable solutions. Um, they're not long-term thinking, um, and I can't recommend these. But I feel like I also needed to share, what would it look like to cut two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? This total is three twelve. I, I don't, I, and it's in there because this is, you could, uh, uh, you know, pick off of this. Um, these do not include insurance benefits, but it's hard to calculate if you didn't know what was, what was bumped and if someone took it or not. Um, again, my least favorite page in the budget, um, I think we present, we're, I'm presenting a reasonable budget. And, uh, I, I hope that we don't have to have discussions around this page. If you look at, uh, oh, sorry, Anne's got her hand up.
Um, one, one thing to point out with increasing the class sizes to twenty twenty one, we've been so fortunate. With our small class sizes, we've been able to come back in person. Those are the numbers you see in the schools that had to go hybrid. In order to create space for children in the classroom. Just a thought.
Question?
Yes, Donna.
If. The COVID stuff. Could we eliminate the utility workers without having a negative impact since the reason they're there is the COVID stuff?
No question. So, I, I've said from the get-go, if COVID is, is set, and as of today, I'm just not confident of that. Um, but if COVID is non-existent in the fall, wouldn't that be a beautiful thing? Um, I'm not gonna recommend we keep three, three utility staff. Um, that's, that's not the right thing to do.
Um, just a quick note that you did have some savings on a duty secretary because of the utility. So you would lose that savings.
Correct.
Okay.
It wasn't much, um, but it is, it is something. They actually have the same salary, I believe. Um, the next page is the enrollment figures, um, and there's a projected enrollment. Um, and what I'll tell you is you used to have a di- another, uh, piece of data from Nesdeck for enrollment. And when I looked at the cost to this year, to pay for the enrollment, um. I was, it's the only thing I get from them except for, um, posting for other superintendent jobs. And I was not willing to pay over a thousand dollars, um, for another enrollment, um, study. So. I just didn't do it. I kept, proud is in there, um, and you'll see our five-year, um, data in there as well. Um, and you can look, the kindergarten numbers are hard to predict again because the elementary school, um, they'll, they'll continue to work on that. Um, thirty six births, thirty six in two thousand sixteen. That's what I'm looking at. And that's, um, significantly lower. That doesn't mean they're all gonna come either or that they're all still here. Um, it's just low. And so if you look at, um, the enrollment, the actual on the left is October one is, is what we have to report to the state. Uh, October one was a scary time, folks. It was, a lot of people were still trying to figure out if they were gonna send their kids to school still. Um, if you look at one eleven, it's a little, uh, closer to now, obviously, and you can see. And you can see where the numbers have have gone up. For the most part, they're up one or two. In in one case, I think it's down one, but for the most part, they're they're up. So enrollment was four oh seven. And this is the projected enrollment, Prouda, Dr. Peter Prouda is one of the enrollments, folks. He does not take into consideration the Yukon effect, but this is his projection. And and you can see for the most part, we've outperformed his projections. And so all the way to the right, the column to the right, twenty one, twenty two class size is what we're looking at right now. That's what we are projecting. So two pre K, two K, two first, and it goes right down the list. We project we're gonna have three hundred ninety seven students, but I think, and there's, there's asterisks next to that for this reason. Here's your answer. We expected four hundred twenty five students this year. We had nineteen students move to homeschool. All because of COVID and they're coming back and works, we also took, only took half of our preschool program. Because putting a three or four year old in a room during COVID is extremely challenging in a play-based program. Next year, we believe, you know, it's going to be, it's not as much of the manipulative stuff. We believe we're gonna be able to do a full program, so that would increase our numbers. We only have one student who was homeschooled, who went to homeschool, that was an eighth grader that wouldn't come back. So if you take all those others, we're looking at, it's not three ninety seven, we're looking at another fifteen students for four twelve. So I anticipate that our number is gonna come back up. Does that make sense? I I hope that's clear. All right. The next page is the twenty five year history, and this is all the backbone to, you know, how do we come up with our numbers? October one, again, is the, when we report to the state. This is the, the, what you see for twenty five years. Again, you see the big shift between twelve and thirteen and thirteen, fourteen. That was when all of the fourth grade was moved from hall school to center school. That's when that shift happened. For the most part, our enrollment has been consistent for the last six years. Minus COVID, I guess, this year's a little more inconsistent. There's, there's a drop, but you can see that for the most part, it's been pretty consistent. Herb, if you are ready, I will go on to the next item on the agenda there in program one.
Okay, so you're moving to the next item.
I'm gonna take a quick drink. All right, so program one is center school. The idea that Dr. Jacoby adjusted the budget process several years ago to try and give you a sense of what does it cost to run a school? That was the idea behind breaking into programs, all right? So what you see here, the first section are the positions. One administrator, there's, this is, there's a, an error that matches what is on your last page or second to last page in your document for staffing, where it says nineteen point two two in your document. Please cross that out and write eighteen point two two. That is the correct number. You add the eighteen point two two plus the point four three, which is a title one teacher. And the reason that point four three teacher is broken out is because that's paid for by a grant. All right, and that's why it's broken out. So if you are looking at the number of teaching staff at this building, not special ed, you're looking at the eighteen point two two plus the point four three. We have one point six five secretaries. That's not, it's not a part of a person. We, when we build this budget, a portion of a secretary goes out to things like special education. A portion of the secretary goes out to transportation. So there are two full-time secretaries at center, but they have different roles. A portion is special ed and we may take a portion for other things as well. You'll see the same thing as at hall, right? But this is how we stretch our people to make, make sure we can get all the tasks done that we need done. There are no paraprofessionals anymore. That was the duty clerical person that was there, that was the point four three. You can see the addition of the three utility staff members. I put them all at center, they're not just gonna be at center, it's just where we put them. I probably could have done it. Oh, a two one split, I hope I don't freeze. There we go. I just got a warning. Can you, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Is everybody else frozen? Donna or Michelle, are you frozen?
No, I can hear you.
Okay, good, phew. Yes. So if you look at the salaries now, it matches, you can go right down the list, administrator, teacher, secretarial, paraprofessionals, and utility support staff. Contractual rates, okay? So if we didn't have the utility staff, obviously, if we didn't have COVID, that sixty three thousand comes out. All right, it may be after the budget process, but it, I can't adjust that now, because I have to plan for it. Purchase services, these are all the items that are, it's a service that we get such as there's subscriptions in here. I had mentioned Lexia earlier. Lexia is a reading product that we subscribe to. We get seventy seats. It is expensive. It's one of the programs that we have found in our readers and writers workshop and our curriculum work that there are some holes that our students have in phonics and phonemic awareness. This Lexia program is to help that. It is greatly needed. It's a subscription. So if there's a math subscription, it's in here and that's what, most of the increase in this is because of Lexia. But all of these are the programs that we pay for and the subscriptions that we have, that's a purchase service. Power School, the annual contract. I trued this up this year. This is a, purchase services are always one of the hardest things to track. And we now have a spreadsheet and this is what it costs to have Power School, our student operating system where all of our grades, attendance, all of that work is done, schedules. That's what it costs for center school to have Power School, all right? The hosting is on my end in the district. You see the copier lease, again contractual, Donna has all those rates, they're usually multi-year contracts. Same thing with telephone, the internet service looks like it went up, but I trued this up as well. We were paying about fourteen thousand dollars a year. We're now paying nine because of our E-rate system and putting in the fiber. So we're seeing significant savings in that area and it's faster than what we have. And you'll see that three thousand for my office, three thousand for hall, and three thousand for center. Postage meter rental is just to get the, you know, to get letters out. And disposal services, this is one of those things that I I think eventually I'm gonna move because I don't like it in the center school program. It should really be in in a district program, but I guess it's the dumpsters at center school. It's flat. Again, most of the purchase, purchase services are contractual items. Educational supplies are non-contractual. This is where you get all your paper from, your, your supplies. This year, there are some, the increase is to two different programs. Again, a lot of research has come out in the last, I would say, eight months, just when COVID came out, about some of the holes that we were seeing in readers and writers workshop. And for our students needed more work around writing. It's very specific tasks in phonemic awareness and phonics. This includes, this increase includes a phonemic, phonemic awareness curriculum, kits for the elementary school, a handwriting program, handwriting without tiers. And it also, you know, of course, it has the, the paper and pencils and et cetera. This is, again, this is one that goes up and down. I would expect next year, those tools wouldn't be needed. Or those programs because you already have them and they would go back down. Textbooks is just reading books more to get books into classroom libraries. I will say we, I, it's hard to do an inventory right now because when we went mobile or went to remote last March, it was hard to know where, what students had what books. So there's an increase there for some books. The media center, they, their subscriptions went up, that's why they're at thirty five hundred. And the periodicals are like scholastic and time for kids, things like that. Those are used, things they use in the libraries, so you can see the textbooks there. Again, all the textbook section are non-contractual items. Computer equipment, we put in a flat five thousand dollars. And that is for things like I mentioned, smart board repairs, laptops, a Chromebook breaks that needs to go out. That is, you'll see as an offset at the bottom. We have piano tuning in there. This is, I've kind of joked with Jane Castle about this. She wants to get the piano tuned twice a year, us three twenty five to do it twice is a discount. It's something that I said, if you get it done twice, then the money's there, but if you don't, I'm not gonna put it back to three twenty five. That is a non-contractual item. The majority of the building maintenance items are contractual. This is your EMCOR, this is your fire alarm testing. And, you know, they come out and inspect the fire extinguishers and the septic tanks. You have to do all of those things and there's a significant cost to it. So we, and when we talked about secretaries before, there's a secretary at Hall School who does a lot of this maintenance. She has this beautiful spreadsheet that she keeps with all of the contracted rates on it, when it's due, what services we need, if there's an increase, do we need to go find a different company? We did that recently with our septic company. We were paying too much money, we found a different one, happened to be local. And Dave, Dave has been great with us, Dave Littwin's been great with us, was with Admiral Septic. So we continually look at those things. And I'll tell you, one of the ones that really kind of makes the hair on my neck stand up drives me crazy is the fire control. It's a proprietary panel. Only one company could do it and we're really stuck on it. And that's an item that's in CIP that may change that for us. It's really frustrating. So those are all the inspections that need to occur. It falls into that twenty six thousand. Again, the majority of that section is contractual. And then the other, Rich is center school principal, is part of his contract. He has, he gets paid travel if he goes, you know, in district or conferences. They have conference money and then they have dues and fees in their contract. The principal supply line is not contractual. That's something that's in there, so when something comes up, they need money to fund something, a special event, a special experience comes up, he can use it, he could pay for certificates for promotion for that. Someone says they want to try out a special piece of equipment in their classroom, he could use funds from that, he has the discretion around that. And it's used well. So you can see that there's a ten thousand dollar increase in total expenditures at center school, even though a staff member was eliminated. The grant offset is up to thirty seven thousand dollars and the REAP offset is five thousand. So there's the total, budget total for this, for, for program one for center school would be one million six hundred seventy six thousand four hundred and sixty four dollars. Talking awful lot. What questions do you have about program one?
And the instructional supplies, who has control over that?
So it's not.
There are quite a few teachers involved here, art, rural language and so forth.
That's correct. So the way Donna and I do this is we take, so let's say there's an art supply line of a thousand dollars for the year. And then there's a paper supply of four thousand and then there's a reading supply of fifteen hundred. We take all the supply counts, they submit that, what they need. And then we take that, we add them all together to put that into that, that total number. So yes, a lot of people have their hand in that number, but they're broken apart into specific line items. There's not one line item in the, in Rich's budget for thirty eight thousand for those supplies. If Art has a thousand dollars, she can't, Rich and the art teacher can't go over that a thousand dollars without special permission and knowing where that money's gonna come from.
So do the staff have enough supplies to do what they have to do in their class?
I always say that we have put in a fair number. Would they love to have more? Absolutely. Do I think that the number that's in there right now, that they can get the materials that they need and provide, you know, proper programming and not send out requests to parents for, to send in another thirty dollars worth of stuff? I do, I think the number that's in there right now is, is a good number.
Now, the reading figure, that's for textbooks or reading books or whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's books.
And that's spread around to all of the teachers in center school?
Correct.
So is that enough? I know it's going up this year considerably, but is that enough to supply them with, with books?
We've done a good job, and I shouldn't say we, really, you have done a good job of putting money into books to build libraries. We're still building libraries. But again, as we learn more and we have improved curriculum, we find that, hey, we need more copies of this book and so that's where it comes in. Or we don't have any books, all of the books, and and this is a prime example, if you look at a lot of children's literature, the main figure in the book is a white boy. We look at those things and so as we do our own evaluations on our, our literature, we want our students to see themselves in their books. So we've been mixing up the literature that we have that's still appropriate for our kids at age. And that's how we build our classroom libraries, it's how we build our, our, our main library, it's how we build our, our cafeteria library, which is like books they can take out. We've spent some time on that, but as we've gone through these programs in the readers and writers workshop, we've realized, wow, we need more books in that area, that's the increase.
But these are reading books primarily, they're not, they're not textbooks.
Correct. It just falls into a textbook line.
Anymore. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we can always come back to this later.
Anne has her hand up.
Absolutely.
Anne has her hand up, Herb.
Yeah, I can't see, go ahead.
Okay, thank you Herb. This is, I'm always thinking about the cuts down the road. When we look at the utility staff, if COVID is still a thing, it might be possible that there would still be some money, COVID money. Are, are we using COVID money right now to pay for those? Is that a legitimate use of that money?
Yes, and and, you know, I'm waiting to find out, I think we're all waiting to find out what the next six months is gonna bring. And I say that from a financial standpoint that we've heard there's millions of dollars that have been, you know, sent to the states, but they've not said how they're going to share that money out to districts yet. We don't know. I do know that I've heard that money is gonna be good through twenty twenty three, I believe, is what I've heard. But I don't have the specifics of it. I would love to hear in the next week, hey, Wellington's gonna get another eighty thousand, guess what? You could just off your budget sixty six thousand for those three utility workers. And again, if you don't need three, things improve and hey, maybe we'll only need two. You could decrease that. If you only need one, you could decrease that. It depends on how the, how things are going in COVID land and what monies we get from the state. But I do anticipate we're gonna get some more. I just don't know how much it's gonna be. We've got three hundred, three hundred thousand already.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other?
Did Tracy have her hand up?
I don't, oh, there's Tracy.
Tracy.
I can unmute her, hold on.
Tracy's muted.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, just to think in a different way about those utility workers. And that money is that we're constantly, after COVID and, but all the time, we're constantly looking for substitutes and some districts do have permanent substitutes. And if that money is already in the budget, it might be beneficial to continue with that if it's possible because it put less stress on the schools to have a permanent person there every single day because a permanent sub goes in every day and then if there's a need in a classroom, that person takes that spot. If there isn't, they help out in other ways anyway that's needed in the school. You know, covering for meetings or PPTs or whatever and it, it can be very useful to just another piece to put in the back of our heads.
Yeah.
Before we cut out that money.
Tracy, that's a really good point and I think, you know, when Rich came. Tracy, that's a really good point. And I think, you know, when Rich came to me about a duty clerical person last year, um, it was just for this reason. It was the, you know, I I have so many duties that need to be covered and teachers are stretched and I need someone to get in scheduling wise to cover lunch duties. That person was hired just to go in and do all of the lunch duties back to back to back to back. Um, that saves a lot of time. So teachers can do the things we want them doing, not standing in front of a group of kids, forty-five kids while they eat. They still have, and I'm gonna say, they still had other duties. They had a recess duty. You know, they might have a dismissal duty, but um, to your point, that's really where that came from too. Uh, but it's just that supporting where we want to support. So, thank you. Okay, Hall School, program two. You're gonna see a similar layout, so I'm not gonna spend as much time on the layout here. Um, you see the number of of teachers. Again, you add the teachers plus the Title One teacher. Uh, you get the total. Again, there's two full secretaries um that are in the main office at Hall. Um, a portion of uh Nicole is uh into the maintenance section. She does all of the purchase orders and tracking. Um, she's the one that does that this does the spreadsheet that I just shared. Um, she's responsible for all of those POs um and and entering them and she, we, she and I collaborate on all those things. The two-point-oh paraprofessionals are non-special ed. One is an interventionist um, that just supports our intervention person. Um, and the the other person is the um, in the in the library media center. Um, and that was the flip-flop of what used to be Amy Redding. So that person is in uh with classes in there. You can see the salaries that are in there. Uh, you see the big jump in teachers, right? Um, and so I wanna, this is something that I want to share of the why. There's, there's a a big jump in teachers there um, of about eighty-eight thousand dollars. And um, this is because of in shortage areas. When we hired, it happened to be that people we hired um were more expensive. So when someone left, um, they might have been cheaper. And then we had a shortage area, two people applied, maybe one person applied. And when that one person applied, if they were a qualified candidate, if we liked what we saw, they were gonna be a good teacher, we hired them. It's a shortage area. It's hard to find those people. And two of the areas that we hired were shortage areas. Um, and we got lucky because we got good candidates, but they're expensive. Uh, there's no other way to 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 share that. That is the the, a big portion of that increase. Because believe it or not, the contractual increase there is about um, what is their typical increase would be about two-point-seven-five in the contract. But this is uh, there's other people we hired that are lower, but it really comes down to just a two to three people that there's results of the big increase in shortage areas. Um, the paraprofessional area I mentioned, you can see the cost there. Um, if you go down again, purchase services, the subscriptions. We revisited what um subscriptions they had at Hall. Some, some of the items that were um not being used, some of them were in the budget and and never even purchased. So we just took them out. This is the real number now. Um, and I've I've said to Mary Kay, look, if you need something in the future, it doesn't mean we can't get it back. But if someone's not using a program, we don't want to pay for it. We don't want a budget for it. Um, so we'll revisit that as we need, but right now, this is based upon the need that we have. And we do share several subscriptions across um the district. So like a read naturally, somebody could be using Lexia at Hall School. They um, some seats could be at Hall, some seats could be at Center. Um, but this is the price they need. Um, purchasers, again, for the most part, these are all contractual. We have to have the climbing wall inspected. Um, it's gonna be inspected at the end of this year because of last year. Um, it's gotta be done. It's the, it's a uh full height of this to the ceiling basically in the in the Hall School gym install. Again, the cost of for Power School is there. Um, the copier maintenance lease is there, telephone, internet, postage, mail, um disposal services. The music um is the probably the one of the um purchase services that is not necessarily contractual. Basically, what happens is we have several instruments that that we own um that are loners. If something breaks, we get those instruments fixed. Um, and it it costs money. It's not a lot of money in the budget for it. Um, but this is something that's consistent across. Um, I mentioned the um educational supplies. Again, this is for every program that has supplies at Hall School. Um, it's, it's pretty much flat than than what it was. Uh, and it's, it's, you know, this is what meets their needs. You see the library books is a little bit lower. Um, this subscription actually went down. They found a program that they were not using. It was not much, but it was something they weren't using. Um, and so they eliminated it. The computer equipment, uh, there's, this is a bigger school, so they have a little bit more money. That sixty-eight hundred again for computer equipment is uh an offset. It says Chromebooks in parentheses. That's not like to buy a new Chromebook. That is a Chromebook screen breaks, we want to get it fixed. Or um, a laptop, uh, you know, we need a a a new laptop, someone's totally fails. We need to put a laptop in a teacher's hands. This is where it comes from. And again, it's all grant offset. On the next page, I mentioned this already again. These are the Hall School building maintenance programs. Um, you double dip on all these for the most part. The only one that you don't double dip is um on the um elevator. Center School doesn't have an elevator, so you have to have an elevator inspection. We talked about what would happen if we went to one building. Here's thirty-six thousand dollars that you basically almost could do without because you're in what you're paying for one space. Um, so you know, the M-Cord contract, the boiler inspections, the, you know, the fire alarms, septic, all of those things, you're paying for two buildings. This is the cost. There's a slight increase there. Sports and extra activities, all of these items for the most part are contractual. We have, we're told what the officials uh cost is for officials. Who knows if we'll have sports next year, but we want to plan for it. Um, the stipends for coaches is in the contract. We, it's a a negotiated contractual salary. It's a rate. Um, we have to pay insurance for this. Um, the stipends for extra activity clubs, that is an offset in the budget. Um, in Title Four, ten thousand. We have eleven thousand eight eighty in there. We kept that flat. Sports equipment, two thousand dollars does not get you very far, I'm gonna be honest with you. Um, but it's, it's what's in the budget. Um, you couldn't probably buy one set of uniforms uh for kids for one team. But you know, we do with what we have and we stretch things as far as we can. Um, next year's not a year to to increase that. And then the sports membership is just um the CIAC. The other items again on here are, the others are contractual, the conference, the travel, the dues and fees. Um, there is some additional money in there for other, for other memberships like the science championship and that. But the majority of those items are contractual. And again, the principal supply here is not contractual. Um, we've paid for a lot of the uh promotion ceremony activities out of this account. Um, they could bring in a special speaker. I think they have paid for that internet specialist, Scott Driscoll, before. I think he's come out of this line. So this is something that comes up that's not budgeted that uh provides Mary Kay some flexibility to to pay for basically. So again, you see the total expenditures is up, the Title One offset of forty thousand eighty-four. You have the ten thousand dollar offset you've never seen for Title Four. Um, and then you have the REAP offset of sixty-eight hundred. So it's a about an eighty-two thousand dollar increase at Hall, and I would attribute the majority of that to salaries. It is just what it is. And again, I encourage you to to uh read the the administrators um write-ups in the end of the budget a- after our meeting.
When it comes to the stipends, if if we don't run a sport, do they get their stipend?
No.
Hmm. How about this year, did um, we save some money in that area?
We did. Yeah, so we're uh, and CIAC is still working on trying to figure out winter sports. We're not gonna run basketball. Um, we've worked too hard on cohorts right now. And there's just so much um concern still about that. So we didn't run soccer in the fall. We're not gonna run basketball this winter. We'll see when it comes uh spring, if we get to do softball and baseball. And we'll see what guidance comes out of the Department of Public Health and and CIAC. Um, but there is savings this year because of that. Um, and that's what helps offset our COVID, our COVID costs.
It includes the cost of buses and travel.
Transportation, umpires, equipment, um, you know, the stipends for the coaches. There's several areas here where there are savings because of that.
And we have to follow the guidance of the CIAC.
So we follow the guidance of really Eastern Highlands and uh Department of Public Health. Eastern Highlands is our our local health uh agency and CIAC. Um, they've been working together, but ultimately it's a district's decision. Um, and you know, I think at this point in time, we're talking about middle school sports here. We're not talking about um, you know, kids get potentially uh getting Division One scholarships at the high school level. Um, it's just not worth the risk at this point in time.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, again, you can always come back.
Yep. Mary Kay and Rich are getting off light.
Okay. Okay, item four. Uh, item six on our agenda, transportation review and the only discussion.
Correct. So this is program four, transportation. Uh, and this is the last program of the night. Um, because it's a lot to take in. So this is our bus contract in essence. Uh, and and so we have a point three-five, what we'll call secretary support at district and schools. Uh, so one of the um secretaries has a piece of this, and then Brenda has a piece of this because Brenda and I do all the runs. A a portion of what she does is um the is is transportation. When you go into district salaries, that's tied directly to that. So that's what that point three-five is. Okay, it's tied to a couple people. The contracted services, again, it's contractual. The bus contract is um about a three percent increase. It goes up to four sixteen. Um, I don't want to get your hopes up, but I will tell you that um if we continue along the path what that we're on next year, we've had a lot of people, the opt-out of the busing has really worked well this year. We have a lot of people driving and I'm not sure if it's really just be purely COVID or if it's just because that's what people do and they don't mind doing it. We may see a decrease in a bus next year. I can't guarantee it because I don't know yet. Um, but that would, the decrease in the bus um would be some savings. Um, but I'm not confident in in putting that forward right now in the budget because I just don't have that information. I don't know yet. And it's too early to know, um, because parents aren't gonna say right now uh what they're gonna do next year. Um, the musical events and sporting events. Uh, you know, I can't really call those contractual because we don't have to send kids to music events. We don't have to. Um, or sporting, we could just decide not to run sports um or after-school clubs. Um, you have some choice in those things, but I I think you've supported that in the past. The um kindergarten orientation uh is or uh and the orientation for fourth graders to get to Hall that's paid for all of that, that small amount. Again, that's straight from the contract that's in the M and J contract. Um, and then our our middle school students that go up to E O Smith, that's, we pay for that as well. And that's part of our contract as well. So all of those, um, you know, it went up some, but the savings that you see um out of fuel um was significant. And so um, the weird thing that happened about that you didn't see in last year's, in twenty-twenty-one, you see that now nine thousand dollar credit? That was our, um, they gave us a credit. We thought it was gonna be off of this year. They took it off of last year's. So um, that's why it's it's lower in that twenty-twenty-one year. But you can still see this, the diesel fuel savings this year. It's, you know, it's about nine thousand dollars. And you can see the increase. We'll, we'll do about, uh, we believe about four hundred and forty miles a day next year. And we'll uh, you know, we'll base our routes on, you know, obviously where kids live and and what's safe to walk and you know, how to get them to school. That's program four. Laura has her hand up.
I have a couple of questions. Um, so the after-school activities clubs, that's, is that transportation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. I'm glad that's in there. And then the other thing I'm wondering about um field trips.
They, students pay their transportation for their field trips, but it is a contractual rate. The PTA does kick in some money uh each year and a portion of that, I think they've kicked in uh about seven fifty per kid in the past. Rich, is that right? Not yet. I think it's about seven fifty a kid. Um, and that comes off of a field trip. But um, when it comes to, you know, if uh if you're on a sports team and you're representing Hall School in Wellington, we pay for your field trip, we pay for your your transportation. If you are in a music festival and you're representing Wellington and Hall School, we pay for your um, your transportation. When they go on a field trip, that's an added thing. Um, the students still represent us when they're there, but it's um, they're paying their way um to get there. And it's a contractual rate that's in the M and J contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Laura, I mentioned that judicial grant earlier too, and one thing I'll say is that's one area that um, it's, it's been cost prohibitive because to transport kids home after clubs is way more expensive than the actual club stipends. Um, it's a lot. And so that has been very beneficial um, that that grant to be able for to allow us to do that, to provide more transportation. More kids can go.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Anne, Anne has her hand up, Herb.
Yeah.
Just going back to last year, whatever happened with, remember we had too much fuel? Has that worked itself out? Were we able to use all of that fuel?
Yeah, that's what that nine thousand dollars is, Anne. So we got that credit and it was, we, we thought they were gonna apply it to this year. So we thought we're, or um, I should say that that next budget, but um, we thought we were gonna apply it to this budget year. Uh, and they took it off of last budget, but we still, the same company gave us you know, the incredible price. I mean, that's just the cheapest price we've had in such a long time. So for fuel.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Herb, I don't know if you wanna um see if uh Mary Kay or Rich uh and because, just because their programs are the ones we went through tonight, they had anything they wanted to add. That's up to you, Herb, or if you think I talked enough.
No, we can hear them. Go ahead.
I'll just unmute you. Mary Kay and Rich, if you just have anything you want to add that you think that's important that I I I missed. Rich, you're on first.
No, I don't think so. I think you you covered all bases. You know, it's a, in my opinion, it's a lean uh budget for the schools. Um, it's purposeful. It's very strategic with Phil, you know, talking about really focusing in on more books for kids, you know, from the consultant from East Con this year recommended. We had the training right before we left for the shutdown. We were looking to really build a rich libraries for our, for our classrooms. It was important. So kids had good opportunities for reading um through the readers workshop model. Um, you know, I think everything is very fair um in terms of supplies for teachers. Yeah, because they they could do more, but I know Brian Phillips will survive on his amount of supply money. And if they need things, you know, we make things work, but we'll operate sufficiently and effectively making sure kids have enough tools, if you will, um, for their daily activities. So you know, um, based on the current conditions with the economy and all, I I think it's a, it's a healthy budget that's fair for the community.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, for, for me on our side, um, I echo uh what Rich has to say. You know, we worked hard on looking at things that we were not currently using that we could possibly pare down to add to other things. We also have to remember that at Hall, excuse me, at Hall School, we're getting kids ready to go on to the high school level, making sure that they are, have the language that they need, math skills, computer skills, science skills to be competitive in a larger arena. And I think that we're doing what we can with with what we have. And uh our teachers are incredibly gifted, creative and talented in taking what they they have and making it magical. So, And our teachers are incredibly gifted, creative and talented in taking what they they have and making it magical. So. You know, I I'm. I sat down with every program. We went through. Things that we could possibly do without and. I think that it is fair and I think that is, as Rich said, very lean. But we're able to work with it and and if we need to, again, we'll make adjustments. Taking bits and pieces and putting it together just like we always have done.
Thanks.
Mary Kay, how does the enrichment program operate there? Is it? Separate program, another class?
So so right now, the schedule is not what it would typically look like. Without COVID. So right now, the enrichment class is part of the U A cycle. And it's. Ms. Richling, who is our enrichment specialist, offers an array of different activities for kids. To augment what they're learning in class. So there's. The other day I was in a classroom. They were doing frog dissection. They were also doing like a physics roller coaster lab. They were doing a dinosaur dig. So they she had different science activities. Then she has things for art. She has things for mathematics. So she knows the curriculum of all the different disciplines. And she's able to to augment those with programs that she has found. During the course of a regular school year. The STEAM class is one that takes place where kids actually have a menu of things to choose from and different teachers teach it. But for this, in this case, she's doing all of the enrichment in the cohorts. So she's traveling as part of the Unified Arts.
Is every student exposed to this?
Yes, every student has enrichment opportunities in the week. And they have, you know, I was just. So blown away by the number of things that she offered. And if they start something that they they think, oh, that looks awesome, but then they, you know. A sixth or seventh grader changes their mind fifteen times. They can then quickly segue into something else and they're not stuck in that one activity. She's done amazing. One of the things she did with the kids earlier in the school year. They did a pen pal. Exchange with members of the senior center. And they they were just, the kids were loving getting letters back and it was just such a sweet, she taught, you know, letter writing. And then she, you know, exposed them that way. So. I think it's great for outreach. It's great for showing kids what else, you know, when kids think of science, they think of, you know. Rocks or planets. They don't understand that science is part of everything or that, you know, art can be. In buildings or in, you know, geog- geographical formations. It's just amazing the things that she's been able to do. So. Every child is exposed. And it's one of the favorite classes. I mean, I was in there. It's just so much fun.
Good. Glad to have that.
Michelle had her hand up, Herb.
Yeah, so I have a question. We've heard a lot about the difficulties that. The COVID experiences happened on our children. In terms of learning loss and loss of social emotional skills. And I was wondering if you, there was. Any particular sense you have, even though it's still early. About. Ways that we might try to ameliorate some of this learning loss over the coming year. And really make sure that the kids are getting the all of the social emotional skills, especially for those that homeschooled this year and really didn't have a lot of. Personal connection. Of whether that, I don't know whether some of that will fall under the. The special ed discussion tomorrow and we are next time and we can include that too. But for the general school population, do either of you have any thoughts about? What types of amelioration we need to do or what types of activities and interventions we might need to to look at over the coming year?
So. We're lucky in that we have the eye-ready assessments that we give to our kids to allow us to see where they're lagging. Which then allows us to be really targeted in our approach as to what interventions we can offer. We all, we in the in Hall have the win period, which is what I need. So kids are able to then. You know, be spend time with the teachers on those specific skills that they're needing. We have heard a lot about learning loss. But I'm not really a hundred percent sure how how deep that'll go. I know that our teachers, especially with social and emotional connections, and I know Rich's is the same. You know, they spend a good deal of time. They did at the beginning of the year and they're continuing to make those connections with kids because we realized how isolated they were at home. We set aside those early release days that we have. Those have been absolutely wonderful in terms of the teachers being able to really spend time connecting with all of their learners. So I I'm not a hundred percent sure about loss. I think that. The learning has been different. Kids have, I think, come to appreciate. The cooperative group work that they that they don't get right now. And I think that when we come back from hopefully COVID-free. We'll see that they maybe embrace those experiences with a little bit more gusto because they realize what they had lost. You know, we won't know for sure, I think, until this all settles down.
Yeah, so of the two hundred and ten students at Center pre-K to four. The number has fluctuated so much with people coming in and out and quarantining and this and that. We're under forty kids that are actually home or. Have been homeschooled and removed from the school. So. It's minor, but like Mary Kay said, that that Wednesday, I talked to staff that after school and a team. Bless you. They, the Wednesdays are crucial, like there's, they said to me, one of them said today, I can actually really feel like I'm teaching one-on-one with this kid. Because when I'm zooming, I have a class in front of me, they're not getting that attention that they need from a certified staff member. So the Wednesdays have been instrumental in helping them. And to have time with these kids that they don't see on a regular basis, to see how they're reading. Another piece that's important that we really hone in on this year is is the intervention model. You know, for the kids in the building as well as at home. You know, we do, we do our regular screenings using the Eye Ready tool. Using Easy C B Ms, which really reads fluency. D R As that are screening all components of reading comprehension. So. It's really pinpointing that with Karen Donaghy, our reading specialist, Catherine Pomor, math interventionist. Kristen Stevens, really, the team coming together, the core team saying. Here's the grade levels. Here are screenings. Who needs more support because of last March through September? And now now with the way we have to operate safely. With the COVID protocols, you know, we're really fine tuning and looking and trying not to let any kids fall between the gaps. And really programming appropriately so they get the right interventions and are successful. So. That's what we're looking at. And even like it's it's been a. We've been doing really well, you know. I think in both schools, we've only been out for two weeks. You know, in terms of a shutdown, so a week and a half. Yeah. So I'll shut up there, but. It's, we talked about today maybe doing Fun Fridays and like School Spirit Fridays, just to do some more fun things. Or like Jan Castle has a, New Haven Symphony is going to do this. You know, virtual trip to to Wellington through the computer where. They're going to get that that symphony experience. So we're trying to think of different things to do to continue. A level of normalcy, both academically and socially.
And one of the things that. I I feel very fortunate in is that, as Rich mentioned, we have an incredibly. Dedicated intervention team that meets weekly. Where we we talk to teams, we find out which kids have kind of fallen through or maybe having some hiccups. And we do some very focused interventions with those specific kids, which we would not be able to do in a larger system, and I feel blessed that we can. It feels like we're working in within a family and every single member of the team has a different. Gift, different talent, so that we can target what our intervention is going to be. If it's. If it's a math-related issue, if it's anxiety, if it's depression, if it's, you know, there's been family tragedies, there's been, you know. There's been dissolutions of of marriages. There's been mental health crises that. It's all hands on deck and I feel very confident in the team that we have because everybody is an expert in what they do. And I can call on those people and say, okay. Let's do a home visit. Let's do this tutoring. Let's do this intervention. And it gets done. And then the student, we we've seen some very good results. So I'm I'm happy with that.
Michelle, one of the things that we've started conversations about, and I unmuted Marsha for this. It's it's it is part of Program Three. Is that what happens after June fifteenth, right? What can we do to continue on? I know there are districts that are considering academies. One of the things that we're looking at right now is, I'm curious to know, our staff is pretty cooked. This is, this is hard. And so. We don't know how many of our staff members, it's not something they have to do. How many of our staff members are really going to be interested in providing a a summer-type program? So we're trying to collect that data now, but also look at, you know, something that's a little bit different that, you know, has come out of the remote learning. Pieces that this early release Wednesday. To be able to contact one or two students at a time and be able to have one-to-one is really important. And so. You know, Marsha is going to talk about it next time. And and you know, one of the things I I. Asked Marsha about was let's, can we rethink summer school? Because if we can save funds on transportation and do it through Zoom, but it's one-to-one, we may get staff that are willing to do that. Those are the types of things I think I would like to see. Because I feel like we can make our dollars go a lot farther. We just don't know still. Is, is there a gap? I- if there's a gap, how big, you know, will it be? It is really hard to continue to collect the data. But they're doing it. I mean, our the administrative team is doing it. Marsha, I unmuted you just, I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to add to that. Just just as we think about, you know, that intervention. Beyond the school year.
I I don't think there's too much I want to add to that piece because we're still really in the phase where we're, you know, looking at identifying who those students would be and really kind of. Fleshing out what it will look like. So this doesn't so much go along with the intervention, but one piece that I did want to mention that I think is. That I know Rich and Mary Kay didn't touch on that. I think has been fascinating to watch is. You know, we are living in this world where, you know, we have to, you know, kind of stay that six feet apart and we're not being able to do the traditional teaching that we're used to doing. With students because we can't do that group work. It actually has been kind of nice. With some of the remote students because our staff has been really creative in being able to provide some peer opportunities with students where. You know, if we have some students who are remote. They can work with some students who are in the building. So it kind of forms some some of that group work that we're missing. So. I wanted to kind of just highlight that because that has been really fascinating to see and to be able to watch the kids when they are able to interact with their peers, even when they're remotely. They light up and it's wonderful. So that's just an opportunity that I wanted to highlight.
Yeah, if you walk into, I mean, this staff has embraced the technology. I mean. Walking in, whether it's in the hallway or in a classroom, I see a kid. With headsets on and he's remoting with a kid at home. So that's fourth grade. You may not see that in a kindergarten or first grade, but I've seen it from second through fourth and. They really, the teachers have talked about a lot of change at once. They've embraced the change. They've embraced the technology. It was a lot that went out at them right away from the get-go and. They're going really well. And quite frankly. I see some practices that we've been using in the past, good back, best practices that. They're using when they were afraid at first to like have kids work in a small group or work out an activity. And I'm seeing great attendance too with whether it's the mask wearing or new protocols with COVID. We have pretty solid attendance at school at the elementary level. We haven't even heard the word of flu. So and strep. So I'm going to just shut up there. But.
I know, right?
We've been good. So kudos to the staff and to Phil with his leadership because. Not many districts, I mean, New Haven went back today after being out since March. Granted, they're a huge, huge district, but. We've been in school for the majority of the school year. That's impressive. So.
Thanks. If I could just go back, just really quick to. Talking about the intervention, the one piece that Phil and I did that we have been really focusing in on whether it comes to. You know, the summer program or or wealth is. We have to really focus in on providing, you know, very targeted instruction. So that's one piece that. I think is important to mention where, you know, in the past, we might have provided support with homework assistance and, but. At this point, we really want to focus in on targeted instruction. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Anne had her hand up.
Okay, Andrew.
Yeah, I have two things to say. Number one. Having been on the other end of remote learning with a first grader and a fourth grader. I am just so impressed with the teachers. The day went from the early morning until the afternoon with Zoom small groups and seesaw activities. It was just phenomenal, especially when you consider the difference between March, you know, the spring and what they've. What they're doing now. It it's just amazing. So are you considering extending that early Wednesdays throughout the rest of the year?
We're we're going to talk about it tomorrow. We want to poll our parents if we do that. Before we bring any information to you, but we'll talk about that at the the February board meeting. But I want to know what people are thinking and and, you know. I I just heard some of my feedback that I was going to hear on my administrative agenda tomorrow. But we are seeing it working. We're seeing. Stress level come down in teachers. We're seeing them having the playing time they need. Having the time to connect with students that are that are at home. It's going well. And you just mentioned seesaw, that's in Program One. We kept that in in Purchase Services. That's something that, you know, we wouldn't have used in the past and we we budget for it again.
Now, I, they, the teachers are phenomenal. I I was so impressed. And having been a teacher the old way myself. I could really appreciate what they had put into it and the success that they've achieved. So.
Thank you, Ann. No comments. Okay, I guess we're. We've gone through the agenda for this evening. Our next workshop. Budget workshop. Will be on the twenty eighth. Of January. I believe at six P M.
Yeah, and and I'll tell you, now that you have your packages. If you have any questions, any board member, just email me. I will do my best to share it with the board once we come back. So the first agenda. Item on, well, first action, I guess, agenda item. On the next agenda will be to give you a chance to think about Programs One, Two and Four. To have any comments. Do you have any questions? Or if you have questions that you email me, I can answer them at that time.
Okay. Okay, any of the comments? Hearing none, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Can I say one thing? Thank you to all of our administrators for being here tonight. That's really helpful. To have you here. Thank you.
Comments at this time. We're adjourning the meeting.